Good evening, welcome to the February 24th meeting of the Franklin School Board. Meeting has been properly posted. Ms. Larson, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Gamble.
Present.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item three, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, community comment. Participants need to come forward to the mics at the table, state your name and address. Statements are limited to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comments. If the comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per board policy, administrative rule 8300. Would anyone like to make a community comment? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close community comments. Item five, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sarpowski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six, are there any announcements by school board members? Item seven is school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting coming up on Wednesday, March 10th, here in the ECC at 6:00 PM, and another meeting on March 24th, here in the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight is our district administrator update. Dr. Miller.
Good evening. Just a few updates this evening. We're fortunate to have continued to see very low number of COVID cases in our schools. We are now focusing on setting up our vaccinations for our school employees. The state is allowing, allocating 25% of the vaccine being sent out to health departments to be reserved for educators. Our primary partner in this is the Health Department and Ascension. We'll be communicating with our employees next week with information about how to schedule their vaccination. Our planning for the next school year is continuing, and we'll be sending the results of the virtual learning interest survey to all of our families this Friday. We're also in the process of planning the refresh of our three-year coherence plan. As part of that process, we're scheduling focus groups with our stakeholders to determine how to best implement our core strategies. Groups include families, communities, students, staff, and the Board of Education. These focus groups will be held throughout April with a board workshop scheduled on April 28th. Finally, I'm proud to announce that our girls' basketball team has qualified for the 2021 WIAA State Tournament and will play in the semifinals on Saturday at 2:10 against Hudson. The game will be hosted at the Menominee Nations Arena in Oshkosh and broadcasted on WMLW in Milwaukee. The winner will advance to the state finals on Saturday evening. This is the first state appearance for our girls' basketball team since 2007 and our fourth overall. Coach Rob Hibbin led the team to a 15-5 record in his first year as head coach. The team and our winter sports activities programs have done an incredible job of staying disciplined and focused to continue their season despite the adversity. There's no better way to send off our six senior basketball players than a trip to the state tournament. Good luck Sabres. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes, we do wish the girls' team good luck at state. Item nine, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Item A is our board liaison discussion. We just had two workshops recently, and part of that, we had a brief discussion, a self-review of our board, and several good comments were made. So with that as our lens for improvement, is there any discussion from board members about our board liaison roles?
So I think it would be, I think it would be good for the board and for communications with the, with the community if our reporting, if our reporting was better, and by better I mean more written down so that they could be on the agenda, so that people could see what we're, people could read what we're doing in, what we're doing in the schools and in our liaison roles. I don't know what that looks like necessarily, but I, I think it's, I think it's something that's important.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The goal, to engage a board member with an administrative department for the purpose of helping other board members understand the work of that department. How does writing a report help facilitate that? Because what you're trying to do is you're trying to send it out to the general public, and I don't see general public listed here at all as part of the goal.
Well, I, I think it's, I think if there's, I think it's important that the public know what we're doing.
This is for our education.
Otherwise, why is there a liaison role?
For exactly what it states here. Help board members understand the work of the different departments.
But is it, it's because that board member's involved with that department, or is that board member sharing it with the whole board? That's the part that might be missing? Granted, if you're, if you have a different assignment every year, over time you will know the full operation, but the three-year terms, not likely. So I think your point is that there's not as much sharing or knowledge sharing for the whole board.
Yes.
Would a standard format be something you're looking at, Mike?
Yes.
Versus a, versus a written report?
Yes.
Maybe just a, even a standard oral format saying, you know, you know, and I've been very guilty of not doing this, but maybe of, you know, when you met, what you discussed, future plan, you know, just some type of general format is a reported format.
Yes. I think that's, I think that's the case. Now, you're, Alan, you're right that if, and if you're right in that, that doesn't further the goals that are stated on this, on this sheet of paper. And I think that, I think that we need to make the, I think that we need to change the goals a little bit, or change the wording of the goals in order to do that.
Well, the second bullet point under due does say meet with the department head and report to the full board. So there is some kind of assumed reporting happening. Maybe it's just a matter of that happening?
I feel as of late, though, if we go by what Claude just described, we have been doing that. I mean, I feel like I've heard that from Mike himself, and, you know, he said, "I've met with this," I don't know your liaison group, but, you know, "I've met with them this week, and this is what we discussed, and here's the plan going forward." I feel like, I feel like our reports do include those things. At least what you described, Claude.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion.
And I don't think the system's broken. I, I think it just could be enhanced.
Well, anytime you're able to share information to, like, a broader audience, I think is, is helpful. You know, like you were saying, the community wants to know, and also just, you know, even sharing at our district table, I think just being able to explain what's going on is, is pretty important, and I think there is an interest. I don't know that necessarily needs to be a written report, but a standardized format, maybe even a consistent schedule, you know, are you supposed to be, you know, it says that we meet, what does it say, twice a year or something like that. You know, some people meet twice a year, some people meet every month. Is, should there be more standardization that way? So there would be a standard format of reporting, but also a standard of how often we need to do those reports?
Yep. I think that's a good, a good suggestion. I think it's a good suggestion, but for example, I've got the finance committee. So what's, what's the biggest thing we do in finance? It's the budget.
Budget.
I mean, and then after that, it's, there's not much that you can report on.
Yes, there are.
Kind of depends.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
No, I, I, yes, I think there are different, there are different, different capacities, like with curriculum and, and instruction, you're meeting with them far more often than you would with finance.
But even finance, I mean, the budget is a process.
The budget's a process.
Pretty much goes on, you know, through most of the year, so it's not like it's just a once-a-year thing, but.
And it's not just budget. I mean, finance has transportation, you know, isn't, all that falls under finance department, or, so there's more things. There's technology also. Is, or do we have a technology liaison? I don't have that.
No, there's a technology.
But, but there is certainly transportation, and is food service already there?
The buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, so there's, that's a separate liaison, isn't it?
More of that happens, but we generally lay out this, this huge report in the budget saying what we're going to be doing. The only thing you could do, you're right, is follow up and say, here's how we're progressing in these areas.
But even that could be valuable.
Sure.
You know, having, you know, a mid-year or quarterly check-in of how, you know, how's the budget going, or how are we doing in all these different areas, that could be, could be valuable, just, you know, for us as a board, but also for the community.
I mean, I think there's some issues that come up regarding the lunch program, some issues come up regarding transportation and busing. So there's a, we don't want to get blindsided by it, but there are, you know, there's, there could be big questions ahead. I don't know, you know, if we could touch on.
That's true. I stand corrected. Thanks, Mike.
If you can't tell, I'm laughing behind this mask.
That was a good discussion. Not looking to come up with a new plan here tonight, but get some notes out on how we can put together a future discussion on the board liaison roles.
If I can offer some assistance, I, I could create a draft of a, a format for reporting back to the board, so there's more consistency in that, that the board could then review and give some feedback on. So I'm hearing that as an outcome of this discussion here, and then potentially a more consistent schedule, and if not that, just a commitment to certain number of meetings and times when you would do that, which I'm sure we could coordinate. So those are two big pieces of information I'm taking away from the discussion that I can certainly help facilitate on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Item B will be our academic excellence scholarship recipient approvals. This is an action item, and Mr. Vallow will be presenting.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is my annual pleasure to present the academic excellence scholarship candidates. Remember, this is a scholarship that we abide by the rules of the Higher Education AIDS Board, and due to the size of our school and our enrollment, these students have demonstrated over the course of their three and a half years of high school, right, their academic achievement and excellence, which then earns them a $2,250 scholarship to be applied towards tuition, towards any in-state school typically, UW system, technical, independent colleges, or tribal colleges. And these scholarships, we are almost always certain, are always used, because if a student goes out of state, then it goes to the next student on the list. So I am pleased to present this memorandum to you for your approval for our academic excellence scholars, the first two of which, of course, will be our valedorian and salutatorian. And we'll be doing some formal announcements of those in the coming weeks to spread that, you know, honor and recognition among our community. Any questions about our scholarship recipients or the process?
Okay, hearing no questions for you. I will be looking for a motion to approve the academic excellence scholarship recipient awards as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Mr. Sprague. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And Mr. Vallow has the next item on the agenda, too, with the technical excellence scholarship recipient approvals.
Thank you. The technical excellence scholarship recipients, which began a 2015-16 school year, again, are based on our skies or our school. It's a $2,250 scholarship per year towards any one of the Wisconsin Technical Colleges. This is one where the recipients oftentimes might not take it, because they may be attending a four-year college, or could be attending, or excuse me, going right to work in an apprenticeship, where this scholarship does not apply. So this is one where we do go through the tiebreakers often. Unfortunately, we do not get information back from the state as to a student's final enrollment in September that tells us for sure if it is used or not. So that's one thing. We do survey our graduates, and we, you know, do different things to our seniors, so we try to know what their intention is before they leave. However, I will say that this is one where it's not always certain that they will use the technical excellence scholarship. But again, the amount is the same, $2,250. I can tell you that, again, speaking to a student today who's on this list, you know, this student's going to a four-year school, so they won't use this scholarship. That's okay. But again, we do go through the criteria, and we use those next recipients up as our students make their post-secondary plans. And again, our technical colleges obviously are MATC, but throughout the state, all the technical colleges would apply for this or qualify for this. Any questions about our technical excellence scholarship recipients or nominees?
Have you ever gone through the four plus the six? I mean, if you, you've had to go down lower than six?
I think we've gotten down to 21 before.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It goes considerably, and again, it's based on their post-secondary plans in terms of whether or not they will, you know, say, "I'm going to accept this and formally apply for it," or not, as they're making those decisions, you know, for next year. And the student I talked to, for example, was, I think, already number seven on that list, was one who's already, you know, saying, probably, you know, looking at the four-year next year, "I'm going to UW Stout, and that's my plan."
So you're asking these people now, but we don't necessarily, you don't even necessarily know until September? I don't.
I believe they have until September 30th to formally say whether or not they are enrolled for that qualification.
Okay, so that's when that money gets?
Correct. And it's for six semesters.
And it gets paid directly to the college from?
Yep. And the tuition, I believe, is split between the college and the state each foot, a portion of that bill, if I'm not, if I'm recalling correctly. The academic excellence scholarship has been $2,250 per year since about 1996, I think, has not changed. In spite of tuition changing, this one's obviously newer, but it's at that same amount. And no student can get both. They cannot get the technical excellence and the academic excellence scholarship. Well, that's not the case for us. They cannot get both.
And they don't apply for this, they're just eligible?
They're eligible for it, and then they just basically have to go to a school where they can get it. All right.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to approve the technical excellence scholarship recipient.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Vallow.
Thank you.
Item D is our treasurer's report. That's available in the board docs library. Item 10, school board liaison reports. We do have a personnel and policy. Ms. Larson?
Yes. Policy 56, 5611, selection of the Wisconsin Technical Excellence Higher Education Scholarships. It was last reviewed in February of 2015. The only substantial change to this policy is the language that is being removed that designates how the scholarship was to be handled prior to and after 2017. The date is no longer relevant to our students eligible for the scholarship. All students have an academic and career plan. The changes to this policy are only in the administrative rule, and so therefore I'll be looking for a motion to reconfirm policy 5611.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Any board liaison reports today?
Yes, I do have one. I did meet with people services. I hope I covered this right based on our, no pressure here. We just, we talked about general staffing. You know, social workers are at the elementary and high school. We have school psychologists at every building. There's counselors at the high school and the middle school. And then also, there's district-level personnel. We have three special ed, system specialists, but, and here's where there's something new going on. They've been reassigned to actually work with our special education teachers through a coaching model, so trying to enhance their, their skill and practice. And then also, we covered kind of all the program areas that are happening in people services. Includes English-language learners. There's five teachers involved there, along with dual-language learners. There's also the alternative schooling, which includes the House of Corrections, and there's two teachers there. And that program does have a literacy review going on. I think we heard a little bit about that during the year. And there's also the Envision at the high school, involving two teachers and 13 students. We've heard about that, I think, in the past also. It's a really competency-based program. That's how that works. And then there's also the alternative school settings, Project Success, which is based on credit recovery. And then it's also revolved with, some students are at Richardson and North Schools. These are schools outside the, the area. And then also in this department is the early childhood education, and something new here also is that last year they started the community-based program, which includes three and four-year-olds at Ben Franklin, and it makes it community-based because other children can enroll. You don't have to necessarily, what was it, where I'm thinking of, be eligible. So you, they have a mix of, of kids, so they learn from each other. So it's been kind of a, a good success. And then also, educational assistants are also in this area for both general ed and cross-categorical. And then we also have the, you know, OT, PT, speech and language. Then also, there's an 18 to 21-year-old program. So that was kind of our discussion when we left it. She did promise that when she starts her budget, though, she would let me watch her. And, and I think that's important, because special ed is an area at the state budget level, that we're getting some traction on how that's funded, because it does take away our general ed funding. So it's good to know how things are put together. And that will be my report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I attended CISA I meeting last week. I talked a lot about the, the 2021 virtual convening, the Institute of Professional Learning, and I will send out that, I will send out the speakers to everybody, or that flyer. Also met with Dr. Mulberry at Southwood Glen. We talked about, they're not getting that many kids back for the third trimester, or it's not going to change their, it's not going to change their class sizes all that much, with the exception of kindergarten and third grade. They're going to be a little, kindergarten is, is well within parameters, but third grade is going to be a little high, still within district guidelines. We also talked about the MAP scores, which they got in after the last meeting and before this one. And the MAP scores are, are going up, are more proficient, so, so that's good news. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Moving on, school and community engagement reports. I know that's a tough one in the current environment.
I will say that I do get the newsletter, and Countrydale is having a, a parent read-along. So everyone's reading the same book. I think it's kind of cool.
Okay.
It's called A Boy Called Bat. So they have some other events around that, reading of that book. And then also, I wanted to say that I, I did watch the Saber Roar. I don't know if you watched this last one. Was it really clever about COVID refereeing? Where they went, went through the halls of the, of the high school, and they would be throwing yellow flags when they saw things happening, like mask down was one violation, illegal hands to the face, offsides, and they even did a measurement where they brought in the, the orange things to measure six feet apart. It was really quite entertaining, so if you have, get a chance, take a look at that.
Yep.
It was good.
It's not always entertaining, is it?
It's good to know they found a way to have fun with this.
Yeah.
I don't think we're the target audience either.
True.
I have been able to watch a few different sporting events. You know, obviously, we can't be going to events, but watching them online has been, you know, just kind of a great way to stay involved. The basketball team, our gymnasts are also going to state, and so watching their competitions has been pretty exciting, too. So it's, we're making the most of our virtual experiences, but it's nice to have that technology that we can still be involved.
And Judy, you mentioned the girls' basketball team, but the boys are also in the sectional finals, is that correct?
They're doing very well also.
We have some very talented student athletes.
And also, I mean, in addition to athletes, different activities as well. Things like forensics are going on virtually, and you can watch, some of that you can watch online as well. So it's not just athletes. There's a lot of, a lot of activities, and we just have to find a way to make those technological things happen to be able to watch that.
Okay. Item 11, school board meeting debriefing. Do any board members have comments about tonight's meeting?
Yeah, I do. Judy, you mentioned in the, in your report about the survey. And you mentioned, is it just results going to be going out to the parents, or what's going to be communicated, and are we going to discuss the And are we going to discuss the results as a board, and can we?
Absolutely, yeah. So just, just the results in terms of the number of responses and the percent of those indicating they're likely to return in person and percent likely to choose virtual. So that is going out. So we are looking at that data very carefully and in many different ways in determining our educational programming. We anticipate that in April, we'll be coming to a board meeting with information about that data and what, what we're thinking about in terms of the program. And then following that, we would then go back to our families and say, okay, you have to let us know what your plans are so that we could finalize what it is we intend to do next year.
Are we ever, because the, the way I looked at the results, there's less than 5%, you know, of the entire students in the, in the district looking for virtual. Are we ever going to draw a line in the sand and say, okay, we're not going to offer virtual anymore? And what point, what point is that? I mean, we, are we going to be thinking about that?
The, this is what we would bring to the board in April, like what it would look like to provide a virtual program, and if we didn't, the reasons why we would not. So if I recall correctly, and Dr. Cohen can correct me, I think we are at 6.7%.
I, I, that's of the respondents, I'm looking at the entire, all the students. So.
Well, so we, we'll definitely have that data public for everyone to see, and we have to process that data in terms of staffing costs, a number of factors, and we will bring something to the board to, to review with regard to all of that in April. And then we'll go back to our families with that, following that board meeting to, to make our plans.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Item 12, future agenda items. Principal action plan update for Franklin High School, early college credit and college start now request approvals, summer school course approval.
Just a question, are you assigned these to any meetings at all, or are these just a list? Or do you have meeting days?
They're pretty close to being in sequential order, but they can change. But you're, you're probably very curious, I think, Ms. Witkowski, regarding the budget document review. And Mr. Alan, Alex Vindrovich had informed me and Mr. Gamble that he's unable to attend the, the March 10th meeting, so that would have to be on March 24th. Do you have a question about any of the other ones in terms of where they may land? It is, it is tentative, the, the list, but typically, it's in the order you see them.
So A through F is probably on the 10th, and then the rest are 24?
I think so, yeah. We don't, we don't put the dates because things can change, but, yeah.
In the past, we had, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
But things would change, and then people would attend a meeting, and it wouldn't be on the agenda, so.
So to finish the future agenda items, F E A wage summary agreement for 2021 and 2021-22, the F S O E A wage agreement for 2020-21 and 2021-22, the non-represented wage increase 2020-21 and 2020-22, the budget document revision review, Friends of Franklin recognition, technology update, board self-evaluation discussion, and 2021-22 preliminary budget assumptions. At this point, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Ms. Witkowski. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 6:35.